First order, roll call.
Alderman Matt.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Um, first, uh, invocation by Pastor Jason Williams of the Valley, uh, Community Church, and Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Headley.
Great. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. God, I just pray right now over our leaders, our community leaders, God, we thank you that you are the one who places people in authority. So, God, we just thank you and we pray over every person, God, right now, that that leads this community and leads it well. Now, we pray that Lord your Holy Spirit would direct the affairs of everything that goes on. Lord, your word says that righteousness exalts the nation, God, that is true with every community we love. So, Lord, we pray that, Lord, in everything that goes on, you would direct all things. I also pray for the families of each leader, God. We know that it can be difficult at times. And, God, we just pray your blessing on everyone. And, Lord, anoint everything that goes on tonight. God, give us wisdom, direction, and decisions that need to be made. And we thank you and we give you praise, Lord, in Jesus.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next item, please. Next name, approval of agenda?
Uh, no changes, Mayor.
Um, proclamation, seeing none. Move on to citizen participation. Anyone like to address the board? Um, please limit your account, uh, talk to two minutes and state your name and address, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for tolerating me for a few minutes. Hope everybody had a good weekend, stayed cool. Uh, my name's Scott Schaper, one zero zero six Southwest Shorthorn, Grand Valley. Chuck, uh, I'm here tonight on a couple of things, one being a sewer on thirty-one, six oh three East Ryan Road. I'm in understanding that staff needs direction whether to proceed or not to. If they do not direct, directed to proceed forward, please explain to me how it is fair to the rest of us to have to hook up and pay taxes on the sewer. My second, secondary, before the election, you were on Facebook saying how you were going to fix not only one, fix not only more streets, but speed up the process with comments like it would appear that you have, I'm sorry, streets, but speed up the process with comments like that, it appears that you have a plan. Could you please share how you are planning on doing this and where the money will come from? Before the, before the election, you promised to reply and answer the questions if you were asked. I'll wait for your replies. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
I was just hoping you'd give me the answer on how you're gonna fix the street.
That's not our procedure here. You get to say what you get to say and that's it, sir.
Ruth?
Yes. Anyone else like to speak? Uh, next order, can send agenda?
May I move to accept the consent agenda?
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to accept, uh, consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Knox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, I'm sorry, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, six zero. Um, previous business, seeing none. Move on to new business.
So, we have liquor license renewals on the table tonight. Um, we need a motion to approve those if, um, you all see that appropriate. We have it for Casey's General Store, all three of them, twenty-two oh nine, twenty-eight oh eight, and thirty-three twenty-five. Cosmetino's Price and Chopper, Price Chopper, store number three twenty-five. Discount Liquor and Smoke, Dollar General Store, um, the Gray Valley Economic Development Corporation, or the Gray Valley Partnership, the Valley Speedway, J Y Amigos, or, um, doing business as El Magway. How to Develop Entertainment, doing business as Mo Country, El Teque Lazo, and Temp Stop are the ones on there for tonight. All of these, um, most of them have almost everything in. The thing we're looking for is a county liquor license. Unfortunately, the county is behind and they have extended their deadline an additional thirty days. So, they don't have to have theirs done until September first. Everyone else, um, most of these have everything in except for El Teque Lazo, I'm waiting on a few additional items. So, we would not issue the licenses until we have everything, um, except for the county license. I'm not sure what to do with that. That's unusual due to COVID.
Do I have a motion to move, approve these licenses? May I make a motion to approve the licenses?
Motion made by Alderman Headley to approve these licenses. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Oh, um...
Are we approving all except the El Toculazo, or is that one included?
So, it would be part of it, but we would not issue our license until we have every piece in.
Okay.
And it would be, I don't know, also with the, um, county license, with us not issuing them and them being behind, do we, um...
Yeah, so our, our thought internally has been, these are all renewals. They all have a current Jackson County license. So, seeing as they'll have everything else, we are just considering we just still have a Jackson County license. Because they're the ones that have extended that. So, if they get to that point, then when they don't have that, then we'll, if that happens, we'll address it at that point. But right now, it's not really fair at all with that against them. And I don't think on our end, we can just keep extending things just because one, I think it's different if it's new, but these are renewals, so they, they already have one.
We got a little order, let out order there, please. Um, need a second first, then we'll go to comments.
Have you had any problems?
Second, time, time, excuse me. We've already had a motion. I need a second, and then we can go into discussion. Motion is made by Alderman Headley. Do I have a second? Okay, now discussion.
Have they had any problems with any of these, uh, facilities?
Okay. I have no problem.
No other discussion? All in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, six zero. Then we have a presentation by Baker Tilly.
Mayor and Board, uh, we have Jack Ryan Feldman here from Baker Tilly to, uh, give you an overview of, uh, where we're at, uh, debt management.
All right. Let's try to make that as big as I can here. Um, thank you for having me here. My name is Jack Ryan Feldman. I'm with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Um, it's been a while since we've been in front of you, so just a reminder of who we are. Um, we are the city's, uh, municipal advisor, which means that essentially we are your tour guide through the municipal bond market. Um, and we do so in fiduciary capacity. And so, we're, we're asking in your interest when we provide advice, um, and with, without, um, without cost. Um, I'm here today to talk about, um, a couple of things. Uh, one, just the economic landscape, um, as a, as a regional and national firm. Um, we, we've, um, seen some trends, and, um, thought we'd bring those with you, or, uh, with, um, bring those to you, uh, here today. Um, also talk about how those economic drivers are impacting the city's finances, um, from a, from a number of different ways. And then also, um, I'm here to talk about your debt management, um, strategy for twenty twenty-one and going forward. Um, so, just to give you a, a sense of where we are on the, on the unemployment front, um, these, the whiter green bars that are kind of lit on the screen are just Jackson County specific data, um, with the darker green bar being, or line being the national trend. So, with, um, since March, March, April, May, there's almost seventy thousand claims for unemployment, um, in Jackson County alone. Um, and, and these numbers don't include the, the gig workers, um, that are eligible to be, uh, counties for unemployment through the, through the care backs through during this recession, which is different. So, um, certainly some, some economic pain out there. Um, just to give you a sense of the, of the policy response that's been done to date at the number of local, uh, or the number of government levels, um, the policy response, the primary goal has been to keep businesses and families afloat during the lockdown that occurred on March, April, May, um, and, and to buy time for the public health response to, to be developed. So, a, a number of those features, um, of the care backs were, uh, twelve hundred dollars per person. Um, that was, that hit, um, most families in April, if I recall. Um, as well as the paycheck protection program that, uh, gave businesses, uh, small, uh, small loans that could eventually become grants to, to provide for, for covered expenses. Also, the pandemic unemployment assistance, which is six hundred dollars for, um, an additional six hundred dollars over and above the maximum three hundred dollars, three hundred and twenty dollars benefit that's in the, that's in the state of Missouri for unemployment. Um, so, going from three hundred and twenty to, to nine hundred and twenty dollars per week as a maximum benefit. Um, it, the pandemic also covered gig workers and also that expired July thirty-first, and the last six hundred dollar checks have already gone, gone out. Um, that also included, uh, funding for airlines. Um, with the money that was given to the airlines, they were prohibited from laying anybody off through September thirty-first. Um, and then also, there is money for, for state local governments for covered expenses through, through COVID. I believe you all had some of those discussions today, or to date, about how to, how to spend that money. Um, and then also, there has been temporary eviction foreclosure and utility disconnects. Um, so, as you might notice, all of those policy mechanisms have expiration dates. And some of those expiration dates are more closely, are, are more imminent than others. Um, so, you know, and back in March, August seemed like a long way to go, but, but here we are. Um, and as, as we speak, Congress is currently debating the, the future of the economic relief. Uh, so, there's just some things to monitor, are, you know, the persistence and magnitude of these cases, the, what the policy responses and what shape, uh, from Washington, and the availability of the vaccine and therapy, which would ultimately, uh, end this crisis. So, how does this all impact the city's finances? So, the first thing, you know, the, one of the more economically sensitive revenue streams that the city has is, is your sales tax. Um, and with the, with the lockdown and various businesses being closed, what's essential, non-essential. So, how each city is, is impacted is different from city to city, and it's all based on what your retail mix is. So, Grand, Grand Valley's, uh, retail base has mostly been essential. And so, you know, that's your grocery stores, that's your Casey's, that's all the convenience stores, that's your fast food restaurants, you know, all of those have been open for the pandemic. So, your sales tax have been largely, uh, has been largely flat. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's mostly good news. Um, one, one caveat in there is that one of your larger sales tax drivers is the sales tax on automobiles, and that is down from, from the year before. And that also, uh, parlayed into your real property, or your personal property assessed value, which also has gone down for this, for this year. So, that, um, you know, people might not be feeling confident enough to, to buy, you know, upgrade that, that vehicle at this time. Um, increased, uh, utility payment, delinquency fees, um, you all had the, had the program to, to, um, to postpone the disconnects for utilities, um, which I understand is, has been since canceled, so, you know, that, um, that support has gone away. Um, your parks and aquatic service has, has, was impacted during the, during the shutdown and the related key impacts. Um, you all did receive care back funding to the tune of eight hundred and sixty-some odd thousands, um, so that's, that's certainly a, a big help. Um, your housing demand, so that's what your future real property, uh, growth is going to be looking like. Your new construction permits, which are the drivers of your growth and assessed value, those seem to be going well. Um, there's been no real impact, you know, going into the, into the, um, this economic recession, there has been a structural shortage in, in housing. So, um, you know, I, I think that, that supply and demand, uh, effect, you know, is kind of winning out. You know, there's still that demand for single-family homes and single-family homes in nice communities, and so that's, you know, that's, that's where, you know, you still see that demand. Um, there's still demand for, um, existing homes, you know, buyers are, are, you know, the, the real estate market is still, still going out here. Um, you know, a, a lot of the job losses, um, to date, have been on the lower end of the, of the wage, uh, spectrum. And so, you know, a lot of the people that have lost their jobs weren't necessarily in a position to buy a house. So, you know, I think that we're still kind of in, in that mode of, of buying and selling. Um, some opportunities that I'll note for, for Grand Valley, um, the appeal of living in downtown amid a pandemic. I live in downtown Kansas City. It is awful because there's no restaurants, there's nothing, there's nothing there. So, you know, um, you know, if my, my lease is up, you know, I'm definitely thinking about going to, you know, like the Grand Valley, the old roads, the boost springs, you know, to stretch your legs out, live in a single-family house, you know, because if you don't have the amenities, everything's closed, everything that you want to do downtown Kansas City, it's gonna be like that for a while. You know, that's an opportunity for, you know, the company. Um, remote work, you know, for people that, you know, don't have to drive to downtown Kansas City every single day, you might think about lengthening your commute a little bit. If you, uh, if you need to, uh, um, only go into the office once or twice a week, maybe a thirty-minute commute is okay, um, as opposed to if you're a little more sensitive going in every, every day. So, that's another, uh, positive, uh, demand factor for, for houses in, in Grand Valley. Um, as it relates to your budget and, and finances, you, you, going into this crisis, you did have adequate reserves in both your general fund and your utilities, and so that, that's positive. You've got, you've got some cash to ride out this, you know, this recession regardless of how, of how long it is. Um, and you've got some time to await and see, and before you, you know, make any, any rash decisions. Um, and then, you know, and as the community grows, you know, one of your primary policy challenges is just managing that growth and, you know, growing, growing with your community and ma, and growing your organization, growing, you know, the, the demand for services and meeting that demand, um, and all, and all factors of the community. Um, I'll, I'll park there. If you have any questions up to this point, um, but then I'll kind of get into the, into the debt piece.
Will we have access to this program, or will we be able to look at it closer up on earth?
Yeah, um, the, the city debt has it, um, so it's happy to be distributed.
Thank you.
Um, so, moving on to the debt management piece, um, as I said, you know, we are the city's financial advisors, and so that means that we assist the city with managing your debt. Um, a component, part of that is routinely seeking opportunities for you to save on interest costs with outstanding debt. Um, this is similar to refinancing the mortgage on your house, you know, if you can take out a new loan at a lower rate, lower, you know, lower your payments, um, lower your overall interest costs, you know, that's, that's a, it's a, a win. So, there's one series of bonds that is outstanding, which are your general obligations. Series twenty-eleven capital appreciation bonds, which are called, uh, kind of shorthand, we call them C A Bs, are callable, uh, March first of December, or of twenty-one, um, which means that we're able to do something about it this year. And in, in terms of timing, if, if we close on, um, December first or later, we're able to, uh, refund and, and restructure that debt. Um, you, you may have noticed, you know, in the news that the, the, you know, the Wall Street and the markets and S and P five hundred have been crazy since March. The, um, municipal bond market has been no different, but kind of the added, one of the side effects is when people are fearful and, and the, and on the equity side, they're rushing the bonds. And so, you know, interest rates have been at historic lows for, um, you know, since, since March or so. Um, and so that, you know, that's a plus for issuers such as yourself, that, you know, to capitalize on that, you know, on those lower interest rates. Um, and as it relates to the state statute with your, with your levy management, just wanted to touch on, on this, um, that you have the truth of state statute, you're empowered to annually adjust your, your levy to meet your current and future debt obligations, um, within a certain constraints. Um, you know, that's one bullet, uh, to summarize, you know, with statute as well. So, bear with me on that. Um, so, just some, kind of, these are the, you know, the vital statistics of, of the, of the bonds that are, that we're talking about refunding. So, there's, uh, six point five million dollars in future debt service for the series twenty-eleven C A Bs. The current interest rate on that, which is labeled the tick, is a four point three four percent. Um, if you were to do what I'll call a vanilla refunding, which is if you just, you know, refinance your mortgage, you got a, you got a thirty-year mortgage, you're gonna take out a new thirty-year mortgage, lower rate, and that, that's pretty much it. Um, that's what the vanilla refunding, um, that I'll label, um, or that I'll call the vanilla refunding, that's what that is. Um, you'd be able to take out five point eight, uh, million dollars, or that's the future debt service, is five point eight million dollars. The overall tick would be zero point nine two percent. Remember when I said interest rate so low? Um, and the future value savings on interest would be six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And on a present value basis, that's six hundred and seventy-one thousand. And the, the present value savings on that, so this is kind of the, you know, financial managers have, you know, these metrics of what, what's a good refunding, and our minimum threshold for, for a situation like this is three percent. And so, anything above that is, is great. And so, we're, we're looking at twelve percent, uh, T V savings on, on this refunding. Um, on the next slide, I'll show what your future debt service looks like and which will, which is what will make the, this front load principal scenario, uh, make a little bit more sense. Um, the city has capacity in your debt levies to move some principal forward from the C A Bs. And what, you have the advantage of keeping a flat levy with this, pay off more principal faster, pay, uh, lower interest over time, and then also, as you can see, it lowers your interest rate because you have less principal out longer. Um, so that, that saves, if your future value savings goes from six ninety-five to eight oh six, on a present value basis, that goes from six seventy to seven twenty, um, and it, and it moves your T V, uh, savings up to almost thirteen percent. So, what does that look like in chart form? I know this is a little small. See if I can make that better. Um, so this is what your debt service looks like today. Um, the black line is what, if you keep a flat levy overall for property taxes this year, this is the bonding capacity that you have. Um, as you can see, there's a little bit of white space. Um, that white space is future bonding capacity that you have under this current levy. Um, you might recall there was, there was an election. If that, if that was, if that had passed, we would have filled up the white space with the items that were in that section. Um, this is what it looks like if you restructured the C A Bs. So, you move over, now, doing out a little bit, the C A Bs are these blue bars on the side. And so, if you move this principal that's out back here forward, so you're paying out, paying it off a little bit faster, it turns into these red bars. Um, and so, you've got one last payment of, if you were to pursue this path, you'd have one last payment of the actual C A Bs themselves, and then you'd also be paying, uh, debt service on the new bonds, which are red, and then the, the twenty eighteen G O refunding bonds, which were two years ago, you all did this exercise where you wanted to lower your interest costs. Um, we just leave those alone. So, the advantages of doing the restructuring C A Bs are, there's a, there's a couple. One, it's, it's lowering your, your interest costs over time, um, even compared to the vanilla refunding. Two, if you do it this way, with having this elevated principal now for the, for the next three years, you, you buy yourself two years of, of a flat overall debt levy. And what you would be able to do with that time is to develop your future C I D, um, come up with your, you know, new list of projects, new list of, you know, your priority list, um, be able to do a new election if nee, if, if necessary, um, and be able to work out all of those, all of those items. And you, you'd get two years of a flat, um, debt service. If you didn't do the restructuring, um, you'd, you'd potentially, depending on what you ultimately decided, this, the, the property tax levy could work out a little bit, as, as the, as the, the negative part of that. Um, and then, what I'll, what I'll say is, you know, if you pursued this, this path, then you see, you know, all of this, all of this white space is future bonding capacity, um, for that new list of, of, you know, community projects, um, streets, parks, you know, all of that, um, that you wanted to do. Um, so that's, that's my prepared remarks. Happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
You said the red area was new bonds.
Yep.
We have some new bonds coming up that...
So, it's, these are refunding bonds, so the, it's kind of a, a, a separate question. So, it's, we're taking out bonds that are already authorized with new bonds that are, that have a lower interest rate. And so, that's, um, that, that's a, a separate scenario from, you know, new bond and new bond capacity and all of that.
Those are existing bonds, it's just like refinancing, moving the principal to the front of, say, the loan. Remind me a little bit when you said new bonds. Yeah.
So, one of the things that we've been working with, uh, Jack and his group for quite a while now, um, you heard, basically flexibility is one of the things that we talked about, because we do know that there, there are a lot of projects on the horizon. But, you know, part of the workshop we went through last week and then what we have coming forward, you know, we have a lot of those things, it's trying to figure out how we're gonna do that. And this is one of those ways where we can actually save money, uh, make it fix your eyes on the interest costs, but then also give you some of that flexibility that you have a little bit of time now to work out what it is that, how you want to accomplish those things that we talked about.
When you're still paying off the debt, two, two and a half years earlier, hopefully.
Yep.
Then you have lower debt outstanding in twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. So, just so the board is aware, the, um, numbers from the county, they came out in July, but they did not include the new, um, the additional revenue, the new construction revenue. So, those will come out in September. So, what we will do is get those numbers and bring back the ordinance and, um, public hearing in September, um, because it's more advantageous for us to do that, um, at the existing rate with the direction moving forward with this refunding.
We generally would like to try and bring that, those things to you earlier, but we just have been told we're not gonna have it. Something similar to what you heard about the liquor license, and we haven't seen the, what the actual situation is on new construction. Because they sent us over the debt, we looked at it, and there was not really any new construction there. Had plenty of it, and that's because they didn't put it in. They, they excuse us COVID, but we don't have it.
Nothing else on that? Okay, next, uh, issue, public hearing, seeing none. Move on to ordinances.
May I move to make the first reading by title only of bill twenty dash eighteen? I have, uh, uh, recommendations from Alderman Headley to accept, uh, bill number twenty eighteen for its first read. Do I have a second? Second on the stat, Stratton. Um, discussion? Seeing none. Um, all approved, please, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, or all opposed, same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, six zero.
Bill number B twenty dash one eight, the ordinance approving, bill number B twenty dash one eight, the ordinance approving the final part of the review for our B five.
May I move to accept the first reading of bill B twenty dash one eight and bring it back for its second reading by title only?
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to accept bill number twenty days eighteen for its first reading, bring it back for a second reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Knox. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, six zero.
May I move to make the first reading by title only for bill B twenty dash nineteen?
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to accept bill number twenty days nineteen for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Alderman Knox. Um, do I have, um, any discussion?
So, this is actually the, it's just southeast of, uh, the current Greystone development, which is more or less more than the Price Chopper. So, it's just kind of a little remainder of, of the division.
No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Um, all opposed, same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, six zero.
Bill number B twenty dash one nine, the ordinance approving the final part of Greystone's day twenty eight.
May I move and make the first reading of bill B twenty dash one nine and bring it back for its second reading by title only?
I have a motion by Alden Headley for section bill number B twenty dash nineteen for its first reading, bring it back by se, title only. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Alden Totten, I'm sorry. Alden Totten, do I have any discussion? Seeing none. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries six zero. So all the ordinances, next resolutions?
May I move and make the resolution twenty dash thirty-eight?
I have a motion from Alden Headley to accept motion R twenty dash thirty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all of the knocks. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the board. The Public Works Department was assisting the Parks Department in adding additional length to the drainage pipes under the new trap over in the Cross Street Park. In doing so in one location, our Public Works Maintenance accidentally hit the Blue Springs Interceptor Sewer, caused some minor damage to it. We were able to temporarily fix that, so it hasn't been an interruption in service. But a more permanent repair is what's before you tonight. Where we're basically hiring a plumbing to go in and do a concrete in place inside the pipe. As well as, at that same time, we also have to pump around that area that's being fixed, so that we don't have a disruption in the flow. This, this fix has been approved by the city of Blue Springs, who owns the sanitary sewer. It's the least cost and most efficient way to make that repair.
What is the cost on that?
So the cost is for both the repair as well as the pumping is not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars. We're hoping that cost will be a lot lower, especially the time to repair and pump around the fix. But we just wanted to provide you with the not to exceed cost first.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries six zero. City attorney report?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things, maybe mayor, members of the board. One thing, the Department of Municipal Law is going to be filing a silent claim on the city's decaf. And they have a few lawsuits case, and Purdue Pharma, and some other debtors. And basically that's for the OBID crisis. The city's have had to spend a tremendous amount of money and time on fighting drug battles in our street, unfortunately. So the settlement, often the plan's supposed to be approved by the court system, but at this time, they're estimating three point four million dollars coming your way. Again, that's a lot of money. So I, you know, I wish, fingers crossed, you get three point four million dollars, that'd be great. But obviously, we won't know the final number until the case is that money settled and the estimated costs are done and all of this stuff. I don't have a timeframe, timeframe for that. It could be a year, it could be five years, who knows at this point. But they are estimating previous costs, past damages, and future damages as well. So that's kind of exciting. You know, it does take very much time to file a claim and it's been a big payoff at this point. The second thing I had is that our city officials training is this Friday. I think we have about four of y'all to sign up. So that's great. If anybody else wants to sign up this Friday, it's from eight thirty to two at an independent in the NPR building, and we have breakfast and lunch. And I'll present things, so. That's all I got for you. Thank you.
City administrator and staff report?
Mayor, do you have a written report for community development for Mr. Feldman, Mr. Feldman's report?
Yes, the Finance Department will be anxiously waiting on three point four million dollars. The only other item I had was the process has started for the twenty twenty-one budget. The budget worksheets and calendar were distributed to the department heads. And they're working on their department needs and requests for the upcoming year. As we do progress through the budget process, we also look at scheduling a budget workshop with the board in the fall. Typically, we have two of those. And I believe Jamie will reach out and try to find a date that suits the board as an entity, as well as the staff members. And that is all that I had for my report.
All right, Ms. Lo.
I put a page at each of your spaces for another upcoming elected official training. This is different than the stuff on Friday at NPR. This one is typically held in Columbia, Missouri. And it's generally a day and a half this year due to the fact that they are operating it virtually. So if you can't get away and you want to still attend, let me know and I will get you guys registered for that. It's at a reduced cost, you get all the same materials, just in case something on that agenda looks exciting to you, you know.
No more reports.
Next, Board of Almen reports. Alden Bass?
I have nothing at this time.
Alden Playboy?
Nothing at this time.
Alden Headley?
Nothing at this time.
Alden Knott?
I have nothing.
Alden Strutman? Alden Totten?
Sorry. I've had several people for some reason asking me about a street light, which I've already been told, talked about, down by Front Street and Main Street. And some of the purpose behind it is the fact that when you are pulling out of Front Street, on Main Street, there's parking with cars, and some of them are having trouble seeing to get around. So I just want to verify that. This has been talked about and brought to my attention by several. I'm bringing it to yours.
Just to be clear, you meant a stoplight, not a traffic?
Traffic, traffic.
Yeah. It's the area right north of the tracks there, which is actually too close to the tracks to be able to truly have a stop on either.
Put it down on Walnut then. Put it down on Walnut. That'll slow the traffic down.
What is that? That wouldn't solve the problem of not being able to see.
I know.
In that stretch, you can still get up to speed.
I know. There were seventeen cars going down Main Street while I was walking the dog down Main Street.
Next, Mayor's report?
First one, apologize for mixed upon names. I just had a brain freeze there. I apologize deeply on that. Other than that, I have nothing to add.
And I don't believe we have need for executive session? Seeing none?